Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome, and we would like to kick this meeting off.
7:04 PM.
7:04 PM, and if you can, and if you would, please stand with us to recite the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Present.
Alderman Davis.
Here.
Alderman Spivey. Alderman Edwards.
Here.
Alderman Hudson.
Present.
All right, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna have to call on Brother Leroy again to lead us. And a word of prayer. Amen. Amen, thank you so much.
General proceedings, approval of meeting minutes of the regular city council meeting, January 22nd, 2024. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second on the floor. Are there any questions, corrections to the minutes? Okay, here are no questions or corrections. Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. At this time, we have communications and reports by the mayor. Just want to say to the staff, this past weekend was really awesome, off the chain. The cultural arts committee, along with the city staff of the works, put on this great Black Expo here in City Hall. We had at least 300 people, I think, or more to come through here on Saturday. If you missed it, you missed one of our first events that we've had here like that, and it was really super. Everybody that I talked to really enjoyed it. The entertainment was great. The seniors, they were really on the floor dancing and having a good time. So it was a great time, and I really want to thank the staff. I want to thank the Public Works and all of, in fact, Alderman was here, Alderman.
Spivey.
Alderman Spivey was here most of the time. Alderman Edwards came through, Alderman Lockett came through, and I did see Alderman Davis, and also Alderman Hudson spent a lot of time in helping with the preparation. So, thank you, guys. A job well done.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, at this time, then, we want to go to the city clerks' report.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, there's an election coming up, March 19th. We recently had a voter registration, and we'd like to thank our deputy registrars who came out to assist us with registering voters, changing addresses, and any other assistance that they needed. Also, any links for information regarding voting is on the city's website. If you have any questions, please feel free to stop in and ask for Trish, and I will be of assistance to you. I also want to thank Public Works, Mike and Mark, under the direction of Director Cuda for their assistance with our semi-annual records disposal program. We were able to dispose of approximately 40 boxes, which was pretty good, no easy feat, and so it made space for new records that we have going into our records area. Also, I just want to say that Hillcrest Baptist Church was here on Saturday. They asked us to share information. They are having programs the first Saturday of every month, legal advice on divorce, landlords' debt, estate planning, immigration, and that's the first Saturday of every month at Hillcrest Baptist Church, and they are located on Pulaski. If you need additional information, we'll have this on the information table. Also, on the information table, you'll find information regarding your polling place. A couple of polling places have changed, and a couple of the precincts have changed. Early voting information, all of this is on the information table in the lobby of City Hall. End of report.
All right, you have the.
The collector's report.
Collector's report.
The collector's report is in the packet. If you have any questions, please feel free to let me know. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Your Honor, for the ending balance of January 31st, 2024. We had a monthly balance beginning of $20,389,966.39, ladies and gentlemen. We had revenues collected for the month of January was $1,664,852.5. Disbursements for the month of January was $2,436,547.20. And at the end of January 31st, 2024, we had a current balance of $19,618,271.24. End of my report, but also to let you know that I'm working on getting on the retirement, Irma retirement. I did some training with the HR, and so they're doing a conversion, and they said wait till after the middle of March for me to actually be on there to get in there and submit that month report. So the report for February will be done by HR, but the March payroll information will be done by me going forward.
Okay, great.
End of my report.
Thank you. Okay, next, we want to go to the committees, and for the committee reports, the first committee we have on the docket tonight would be the Finance Committee. Alderman Lockett, the chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. Seeking council's approval for the vouchers in amount of $1,735,908.94.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and two seconds. Okay, are there any questions, comments? Okay, here are none. Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, end of my report.
All right, next, we have Law and Order's Government Operation. Alderman, oh, Hudson, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. My next meeting will be called to order on February 5th of this year at 7:00 PM at CCH. End of report.
March 5th.
March, I got February. March 5th.
I'm sorry, Alderman, what was the time again, please?
7:00 PM.
Thank you.
End of report.
End of report.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Public Works and Utilities, Alderman Davis, the chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I get a resolution number?
Certainly. Ours and Robert, dash four, dash two, four.
Okay, I'm asking council approval for a resolution for the 2024 CDBG funds in the amount of $400,000 for street improvements, and I just want to preference, this is just a request to put the application in. Those streets have been determined.
Second.
All right. Got a motion and a second? Are there any questions? Here are no questions. Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
Okay, my next meeting is going to be March 11th at 6:00 PM, and that's the end of my report.
All right, thank you. Next report, we have Economic Development Plan and Zoning. Alderman Spivey, chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to announce that we are going to have a Chicago-style hot dog restaurant coming in place of Frankenloos. That's located in Cooper's Grove at the end of the corner there, so it should be coming soon, so I'm just trying to get the rest of the information from the people there, from the building owner. End of my report.
Okay, we're not aware of that, but thank you for the information.
Okay.
Next, we have Education, Parks, and Recs. Alderman Edwards, chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. We just had a meeting, a good meeting, and it was brought to my attention of the issues at Hillcrest High School, Mayor, which I'd like to sit down and talk to you. I want to work hard to try to help the school and work with the parents who have the issues. Also, I met with the seniors for Black History Month. They came down dressed very gorgeous in their dashikis, and I gave them an hour lecture on Black history, ancient history, and so on. We had a great time, a lot of questions and answers. Also, Mayor, I'd like to know, let people know, we still need volunteers for New Roots. As of today, out of the 37, we need 10 more for March 19th. It's Rich STEM School. Out of the 50 we needed for the 20th, we need 25 more. These young seniors will come down with typed-up resumes, and our job is to read their resume and then give them some kind of insight and do a mock interview. So we're asking people to volunteer, but you must register in order to get into school, but I need more help to help our young people be successful. End of my report, Mayor.
I'll volunteer treasurer Burris, since he don't have to go downtown anymore.
I'd rather get money from the treasurer than have him come there.
All right, thank you for that report. Okay, so I think we have registered how many?
We probably got about maybe nine that will be coming through the registration portal.
So we're working it, we got nine volunteers so far.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay, so with that said, then, we'll move on to, I need a motion to open the floor to the public.
Motion, open the floor to the public.
Second.
It's been probably motion and second. Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
All right, motion carries, public. If you'd like to come to the podium, give us your name. There's a clock on the wall. Your time is limited to three minutes or less.
Good evening. My name is Melva Smith Weaver, and I've lived in this city since 1986. Always had a vested interest in the education of not just my kids, but kids in Country Club Hills. I live in Alderman Edwards Ward, and I'm very concerned about what's going on at Hillcrest. It's nobody's fault what happened to that child, but it is somebody's fault when decisions are being made regarding what happened there to the other children. I am always looking to find out what's going on. I'm real, real excited about football, and when the football schedule for the coming season was posted, all of the home games for Hillcrest were scheduled to be on Saturday morning at 11:00. Like, who did this? Do they really understand what this has done to not only those students that play football, the students' morale at the school, parents, people that are just interested in football? When the games are changed to Saturday, what college scouts are coming on Saturday? None. They come on Friday. How many parents have to change their work schedule? How many students have to change their work schedule? I attended the school district meeting last week, and there were some football players there, and they work part-time jobs to help their families. This one little boy was crying. I gotta choose between going to work and playing football. Why should he have to choose? When the decision for Saturday games were made, who was involved? Anybody here? Me either. No parents were involved, no community was involved. That's not right. Our children need to be looked at like they are valued, and they're not. And I just want to know, what has the city of Country Club Hills do, done, to be a part of that situation of what's going on there? Sorry for the child that got shot? I am very sorry. I'm sorry that it happened at Hillcrest, but what can we do to help them? Because what I heard at the school district meeting was, there's not enough resources for the things that everybody expects to happen to happen. So what's going on? I just need to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Real quick, piggyback off of her. But I had just had a.
Excuse me.
Yeah. I just had it. Yeah, it's good.
Yep, just state your name for the record.
Cliffton Graham, Jr.
Thank you.
492 Lake Court Drive. Okay, but anyway, last, this past week, I went to an event concerning recruiting a supervisor for school district 144.
Superintendent.
Huh?
Superintendent.
Superintendent, I'm sorry, superintendent. She knows, because she was there with me, okay? Thank you. You look beautiful, by the way.
Thank you.
And we got an opportunity to meet with the basic, the person who's going to make a decision who to pick the final superintendent. I didn't want to get into, I was going to get into that, but concerning her, I had an opportunity to talk to and listen to the principal at Hillcrest. He said the enrollment is down to 55%. 55%. That means half the kids are not coming to school half the time. You know, I don't know what they got to do with it, maybe the killing, maybe it could be other things, but I think it's, maybe we need to look at some real numbers here now. These kids not going to school, then we worry about the test score. You can't take a test score when you walk in there every other day and then find a surprise test. You know, you need to focus on these kids, and we're losing, we're losing them fast. And like you said, it's Friday, Saturday, Sunday. But what I hear from the principal and the Bremen superintendent is that, you know, they do need help and support. We need a lot of it, you know, and so they even invited me, had to talk to me, to go down there and do a little teaching and whatever it is to help out if I can, to talk to them, make a tour of the schools. We must, and I'm just seeking out, I'm thankful people seek me out to give me certain information, you know? And another problem may be because it's time, like I mentioned, it's time for reparation. Our kids are suffering, our community's suffering, and that's one reason that, and I appreciate Tyrone last time saying he do support reparation with me, so, I mean, I've been talking to the reparation people across the country and the state, and, you know, we got to try to duplicate Evanston. Country Club Hills been around long enough, so I'm asking the Black communities, all the 21 mayors in our Southburn region, to reach out and say they support reparation. And if you don't, I just stay quiet on it, but this is important, because the Democratic National Convention is coming here August 18th to 22nd. And so we, we need things in our community. I need my community to step up and support reparation. You'll be hearing from me, my current email I have is "reparation," not "reparation." You know, that's long, but check me down, Cliff Graham.
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Dick Treshy. Just wondering about possibly on.
What's your name, sir?
Dick Treshy.
Did you get that?
I know Nick.
Okay.
And I was wondering about on Country Club Lane, possibly you're getting some speed bumps out there, because we got some people that are like drag racing down there late at night, early morning. Couple neighbors told me that one of them got, woke up one morning, their mailbox was laying on the grass and all that, someone nailed that. My grass was tore up at one time, and they say speed bumps do good over there. It's needed, and also, what is it, streetlights? It's dark over there, like where I'm at at 17781. It's, you don't see nothing out there. I mean, I think the closest streetlights is like seven, eight houses away on each side. Nothing close.
Is that it? Thank you, sir. All right, before we close the floor, we got someone else?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Councilpeople. My name is Reverend Mitchell Johnson. I actually served at Hillcrest Baptist Church, and, well, I came tonight to listen. What dawned on me is some of the challenges in this community. And Mr. Alderman, I'm not sure if you're aware of the Parent Mentoring Program. Are you aware of that program at all?
What are you talking about?
I'm sorry, Mr. Alderman.
Me?
You, sir, yes.
Yeah, I don't suppose to respond to you.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
When I close the floor, then I respond to you.
Yes, sir, I apologize.
That's proper protocol for.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. And let me just say, on the record, there is a program called the Parent Mentoring Program, and it offers, actually stipends to parents to participate with their children in the school system, to help them understand why being on time in school is important, why doing your homework is important, and more importantly, parent participation in all of the events. And I think that might be something that if you're concerned about the parents, you're concerned about the school, you might want to take advantage of opportunities, and then, I'm not sure, I know you're not supposed to respond, I say it parenthetically, Justice 40 dollars are available for disadvantaged communities. $240 billion are available for everything that impacts climate change, new housing, senior housing, income-based housing, veterans' housing, to repair your water, wastewater treatment. I don't, I don't know if you guys apply for any of those dollars. It's Justice 40. Look it up. I'm a Justice 40 technical advisor. I'll be here after the meeting is over. I think it's something that warrants your attention. None of these projects will be impacting your budget. It's all money for reparations for people in communities of color. Signed by Joseph Biden in 2021, $500 billion. We can discuss reparations from that right now until my teeth fall out my mouth. We may never get it, but this is the first time in the history of this nation that so many dollars have been set aside for disadvantaged communities and people of color. I would, I would ask that we consider taking advantage of these dollars. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. If you're going to be around, I'm sure there might be questions that the audience might want to ask. At this time, we close the floor to the public.
I'd like to make a motion, close the floor to the public.
Second.
It's been probably motion and second. Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey. Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. At this time, we have the automatic report, starting with Alderman Edwards.
That's fine. Thank you for coming out. To the gentleman who mentioned speed bumps, we have speed bumps, but we take them up based off of going into the winter. So as Mr. Davis and Mr. Lockett, we will be meeting to discuss when we will put them back down after the police evaluate the area. So they're coming. The next meeting that he said he announced, I will be questioning how many we have available, how many we used last year, and how many we need to purchase for this year with Public Works. So they're coming, okay? For Mr. Graham, I have met with the superintendent, and I've met with the principal, and I was told, I'll call you back. Haven't heard a call back. I did get a text from the principal this week. I got an investment, I got a grandson there, okay? And I watched the whole season he played basketball, and I was disappointed. I look at the crowd for the varsity games, disappointed. So when you look at the school system, it's the parents that got to kick in gear to get it going. We need parents who are willing to get up and stand up and demonstrate that they want to make the school better, because our young people deserve better. Far as trying to help Ms. Weaver, I'm going to try to get a list of seven things that we know need help, and then I'm going to try to get the council's support, and then we're going to arrange a meeting with the superintendent and the principal to see, can we demand better out of our school, which we pay tax dollars to exist? End of my report.
Thank you. Alderman Spivey.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank Public Works for getting the lights on. Mr. Cuda over on 186th Place. We still have a light out in Provincetown on 186th and Provincetown in Windsor, so that will be taken care of shortly. Also, I'd like to thank Mike again for coming through the ward, taking care of the potholes. We have some great weather coming this week, so we'll be able to take care of the rest of those. As the mayor stated earlier about the culture affair, it was great, you know, Black History Month is here, we have one more week, but this weekend was very exciting. This is the first time that we had that type of event here. I just want to thank the commissioners for going all out. I'd like to thank the entertainment that was there. Javon Watson and one of the commissioners that is a singer, Ms. Atkins, she's performed, so it was a really great time. End of my report.
Thank you. Alderman Lockett.
Thank you, Mayor. My first, like to mention that Black History Assembly will be Thursday, February 29th at Saikuda Elementary School, and that's, it's going to start at 8:30 AM, it's showtime. So, or I guess it's two of them here, 8:30 and 9:30?
They have two shows.
Two shows, 8:30 AM and 9:30 AM. That's at Saikuda on Thursday, 29th. Next, I'd like to just mention Doreen Purvis, who is our events coordinator. Lost her mom this week, and I first want to thank her for the great job she did in putting together the Black History Expo. Very good job. And then I want to just take a moment of silence for Doreen's mom, the gentleman, and I don't know his name, but he owns the Home of the Hoagie up there on 167th Street, lost his dad, and then I want to just keep my great friend, my brother, Louis Blanchard, family in your prayers. Not only was he my employee, he was my great friend, he was my brother, and now that he's gone, I have to do some work now. Okay, just a moment of silence for those three, please. Thank you all. The weather is changing. When the weather changes, people tend to drive faster. Make sure if you have kids, grandkids, and that, and they're walking home from school, that they do use the sidewalks. People tend not to pay attention to stop signs no more, whether they're speed bumps or whatever. Sometimes they going fast because it's not their car. It's their mother's car or somebody's car that they took out of Walmart while they're still in there shopping, so it's a stolen vehicle. But again, it's time to, or the weather is getting nice, don't forget to remove your Christmas lights. I don't want to see Christmas lights in June. With that, that's going to be the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lockett. Alderman Davis.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I don't have anything, but I do want to thank Reverend Mitchell for sharing the information, and I think that hopefully the city can actually benefit from some of the information you shared, so thank you for that. But that's the end of my report.
Alderman Hudson.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. First and foremost, I know we did it a couple of times, and I'm going to do it a few times. I'd like to thank Mike Cuda and his crew, Public Works, for placing all the various signage in Ward 3 regarding the Cup Company over in Churchill Down. Appreciate that. Also, residents in Ward 3, Public Works are repairing potholes, as mentioned before, in your area, so be aware of that. If you see any work being done, see them, please move your car so they can get the trucks down there to repair your streets. Also, I'd like to give thanks to all the Country Club Hills employees who donated their Saturday and working for the Black History Event. Also, Mayor, I'd like to thank the mentoring program, the children, for coming out and assisting as well. And also to all the residents, if you see something, say something. Call 911. My final statement is, my next Law and Order meeting will be held March 5th, 2024, at 7:00 PM. End of report.
Thank you. All right, before we close, just one, couple of things here. I heard about the concerns, and I know about the concerns at the schools, the school districts and things like that. But we here at City Hall, we are limited in terms of what we can do. We offer our assistance. And if our assistance is not accepted, then that's really all we can do because the school board is a separate entity. So what I suggest is that the parents of the different districts need to get together and apply pressure to the school boards to get what our kids really need. And I understand that as a shortage of resources, there's a shortage of resources all over the country. In fact, as I sat here tonight, the City of Country Club Hills is about fourteen people short. And we can't find people who are willing to work, especially to work hard. And so I think it would be great if the parents could get together and attend this superintendent's school board meeting and let them know exactly how they feel about their, their child's education or all the kids' education. So, but we are willing here to help as much as we can. But as the Alderman said, Alderman Edwards, we offer, and that's pretty much, you know, all we can do. But we're here to support. With that said, I want to ask for adjournment.
Mayor, can I be recognized? I just want to say something too. I want to thank the Police Department for all the patrolling that they've been doing in the four-four and throughout the city. And also that there's a one-eight-hundred number that you can call in case you feel that there's something going on that you don't want to put yourself out there on. And the number is area code seven zero eight two zero six two eight nine nine. That's two zero six twenty-eight ninety-nine.
Okay, Treasurer, did you have anything?
Uh, no, Your Honor.
All right.
May I be recognized?
Yes, go right here.
I'm sorry, just to share some additional information. Working with the Illinois tollway system to come out next month in the lobby of City Hall and assist residents with the, with the new, they've gotten rid of the transponders, so now they have the stickers. So they're going to come out and help residents with that. So watch in your water bill, there should be some information on that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, Alderman?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it's been probably motion and second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman Spivey?
Yes.
Alderman Edwards?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'd like to speak to the mayor of the councils, members, your Alderman, please come forward.
Seven thirty-five P.M.
Thank you.